We're going to start this meeting. I'm going to welcome everybody to the night to our office. Scott County School Board meeting. Give y'all a good celebration. We need to get started. All right, Phil O'Keefe, we're going to have a moment of silence. If you don't care to stand, then it'll be a pile of five questions later.
(inaudible)
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 Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like I said, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. And so, our first agenda item is items to add or approve on agenda. I've got to make up a few adjustments. Under superintendent reports, F and G, we're going to move it seven, F and G down to nine, D and E. So, under superintendent reports, F and G, we'll move it to nine, nine, B and E. Unless anybody else has any questions, concerns, or about the agenda, I need that motion approved.
Make that motion.
A vote for Mr. Sally and a second by Ms. Killamore. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we had a couple of meetings last month. We had a regular meeting July 6th. If y'all had time to look over our meeting minutes, got any questions, concerns? Make a motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. McConnell.
Second.
A second by Mr. House. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we had a special call meeting July 15th. So, we don't have a chance to look at them meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Sally?
Sir.
Second by Ms. Killamore. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is approval claims. If no schools not going on, that's why we still got a bunch of deals. Y'all had a chance, got any particular questions on any particular item on our expenditure for the month of July? I'll direct you to the person who can probably answer that. If you have no questions, I need the motion for approval, please.
Make a motion.
Got a motion from Mr. McConnell.
Second.
A second from Mr. Sally. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is public comment. Before we get started tonight, each individual, you know, gets a chance to speak if they want to speak. I know there's a lot of people here. I'm not trying to deter any of y'all speaking. I've got a limit to your time, so I'll try to start limited at five minutes if you don't care. If there's any particular people, person that'd like to speak for a particular group that could help a lot, just power with us. But you just stand up and whoever wants to speak first, welcome to the proposal.
I'm going to hand out, I'm not going to give you guys if you wouldn't care. All right, pass this around. While your pass goes around, just real quick, as I understand, it's five minutes. I will say mine will probably take about 10. Will you raise your hand if you're here with me particularly? So, I think there's a number of people that could walk up behind me and maybe if you'd be willing to donate your time in case it's needed, would you raise your hand? Thank you. This will take about 10, maybe just a little over minutes. I've got very prepared words I want to speak about tonight. So, I'll wait until those papers are passed around and everybody has a copy of that because I'm going to be referencing that. As your pass goes around, I'll go ahead and start and say this. You know, our county and what we're facing right here is multiple potentially bad financial options provided to us by Richmond and the Virginia Department of Education. But I want to be very clear also, there's only one that is the right path. Elections have impacts and we are feeling the negative impacts of those elections now. Richmond's actions have led us all down and show a lack of true thought leadership that respect everyone. Individuals have rights and those rights are to be respected regardless of what the majority or the minority want. We must ensure that we are considering, preserving, and protecting the rights of all of our children and all of our people and not just the loudest, not just the few over the majority or vice versa. We must adopt an option that protects everyone and not just some of our children. We must call this policy for out for what it is before we exchange one set of victims for another. This is an attack in the form of a proposed policy which violates our children's constitutional rights and essentially is an emotional response of retaliation by those in Richmond, not a call for equality or justice that respects the rights for all. If it was, it would respect everyone's rights and not just the rights of some. But we must too be careful that our response comes with love and not an equally damaging and emotionally fueled knee-jerk response. I know there's concern about the potential for lawsuits with one of the agenda items we're going to be speaking about tonight, particularly the item on transgender and those with gender dysphoria. Regarding those lawsuits, you know, I know there's concerns around that, but I want y'all to understand too that the path set before us, either path could result in lawsuits. Okay? If passed, the non-transgender student families are already building a coalition with legal representation that's prepared to bring forth lawsuits based upon the Code of Virginia, section 22, doc. 1-87, which falls underneath judicial review within 30 days of any actions that will potentially jeopardize the safety of our youth. This is already an action. I understand that some lawyers have advised this policy should be adopted because of the legislation set forth regarding gender dysphoria and transgender rights. But have they not considered other rights? Should we allow our children to exercise their Second Amendment rights at schools? Should we allow our children to exercise their First Amendment rights and walk up to a child or another child or a teacher or administrator and just cuss them out? No, we shouldn't, of course not. We certainly know what's legal, but within that umbrella, we also provide guidance and protection for our children. Further, may I remind you that at least, at least as of last night, I know that Russell County, Augusta County, Washington County, and Pennsylvania counties were assured by their legal representation there was coverage under existing policy. It's a document I shared with some of you and I hope it's been distributed to all of you. They ruled against the proposed policy for expressed legal concerns, including, and I quote, legitimate constitutional issues, end quote. And I quote again, "Put the school board in the position of potentially violating multiple constitutional rights of students, parents, and employees," end quote. Again, this highlights the issue of the difficulty of your decisions tonight, okay? Further, your elected role as a representative is to represent the desires of those whom you represent. Personal beliefs should be set aside unless it's a 50-50 issue, which this is not the case. Let me reiterate that we can adopt an option that protects everyone, not just some, but everyone. If it comes down to financing the schools, ask yourself this question, if it comes down purely financially, is this your 30 pieces of silver? Richmond cannot hold our school money for ransom. We can sue to get it, and it's not their money to decide upon, and they are required to provide public health education via the Elementary and School Education Act of 1965 and the No Child Left Behind Act and other legislation. If you choose to think purely financially, tell me right now, what is my child's safety worth to you? Can you really put a price on children's safety? What is the acceptable price to potentially expose your neighbor's granddaughter or grandson to potential sexual or mental abuse or unwanted sexual advances in a private enclosed room? What price is acceptable for that? How would you feel if your wife, daughter, or granddaughter were accompanied by a biological male to a restroom or locker room alone? If that bothers you, as I think it would most of us as a mature adult, let us imagine for a moment how a less mature child would feel in this situation. Imagine the fear that they will have to silently endure, like some of these others that are coming forward with issues have had to endure. Again, there's options that will protect everybody. I do not wish that upon anyone, male, female, transgender, or otherwise. None of our children should suffer from that. I want to be very, very clear. Ask the children of our schools what they have, what they think. I'll tell you right now, personally, I have asked multiple children, I'm familiar with a lot of the kids in our school systems. I have yet to found one that is comfortable with the situation this policy would place them in. Further, I have multiple that have expressly told their parents that they would not like to come back to school if this policy is passed. If accepted, when the first sexual or physical attack results as a result of this policy, are you prepared to look at that victim eye to eye and look at them and say, "Your suffering is worth the price"? I don't think any of us want that. Again, I'll remind you, there are options we can adopt that will protect all children. Let's get to some statistics that's on the piece of paper that I gave to you. The Rape Abuse and Incest National Network, otherwise known as RAIN, reports that every 68 seconds, there is a sexual assault in America. I've been talking for a few minutes, there's already been a couple of sexual assaults in America. One out of six women in America has been the victim of an attempted or completed sexual assault. And here's the kicker, of all these nationwide sexual assaults, 8% of these reported crimes occur at school. 8%. Let's not pass a policy that increases the risk in these statistics. According to the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, the fifth edition, gender dysphoria prevalence accounts for anywhere between .002 to .014 of the population, okay? I couldn't find child-specific numbers, but that's the general population, between .002 and .014. Now, I want to contrast these figures further against the Cochrane Database of Systemic Reviews. Approximately 1% of the population requires the use of a wheelchair. Now, where am I going with this, you might ask? Disabled wheelchair users are 10 to 20 times the number of people that suffer from gender dysphoria. Yet, do we destroy the stairs and force everyone to walk up the ramps to enforce equality? We don't do that. We don't do that. Why should we take a similar path now? We can provide an accommodation, but do not take away and violate the rights of others. Propose options for students that feel deprived without violating the rights of all others. Let us establish rules and facilities to accommodate all of our students and not neglect, single out, or reject anyone. Specify rules and policies, including one person at a time access to facilities that maintain a safe and healthy environment for all students. A single restroom, a single restroom and facility accommodates students that may also be self-conscious even among those of their same gender. So, let's not disregard those students either. Let me add that I've heard about the possibility of low-wall stalls or stalls that even go all the way to the wall, but unless those stalls go all the way to the floor and unless there is some mitigating control to prevent multiple people from accessing those rooms, that's still not sufficient to provide access if we're going to have co-location of these areas. It's not worth it to take the risk and jeopardize the innocence of our children in a potentially increased attack in our schools. I open by stating that we should preserve everyone's individual rights. I'll reiterate that point now by urging you to consider the rights of everyone and not just a few. Do not violate the rights of privacy for our innocent children to simply appease a proposal that will increase the dangers for all students and that will include those that are transgender. This will not help them either, okay? Instead, do as you were elected and represent those who elected you. Think outside the box, come up with a better solution and not a one-sided reaction that will again jeopardize our children's safety. Let me remind you also of the oath that you took to uphold the state constitution in which section two, article one of the bill reminds you that the people are the source of power. It's also on a document there for you to see. Inherently, the power does not come from Richmond, it does not come from the Virginia Department of Education. We are in control of how we rule our, in this county. Additionally, you swore an oath to the Constitution of the United States. Our rights and privacies are covered by multiple amendments, including broad protections in the Ninth and Fourteenth Amendments. You swore an oath as you became a board member and if you're so elected, you chose to close the words, "So help me God." With that in mind, if you worry where the aftermath will, well, this will fall, if you take the right path, let me remind you of this. Romans chapter eight discusses the duties and potential hazards and hardships that we may face in this lifetime. Romans 8:31 says, in the end of the verse, "If God be for us, who can be against us?" Remember this point as well, and this is equally important. If you stand against God, who can stand for you? As I come to a close, let me say that no child's concerns should ever fall upon deaf ears. I'm not wanting to not disregard anybody. We need to listen to all of our children. Any and every child's concern should be heard with compassion and should be addressed. We love all of our children, no matter what the situation or circumstance is, period. And anyone that feels any less than that, I will debate you till the end of the earth. We love all of our children and we should. That is our responsibility. But we cannot let the accommodation of one set of victims turn into the creation of another set of victims. That is not a solution, but rather choosing one over the other and does not represent equality and only furthers the divide that is destroying our country, period. Despite our religious convictions, despite those convictions, this goes beyond only religious beliefs and as a standalone concern, it's about protecting the interest and constitutional rights of our children and indeed their very safety and not giving preference to one over the other. The facts and figures I mentioned earlier, they stand for themselves. Let's don't take actions that increases the number of one to six to one and three, or one and two, okay? Sexual assaults every 68 seconds. I don't know how many have occurred, but there've been a number since I've been up here. Let's don't increase that number, it's already too high. The price is not acceptable to increase the number of victims. I know it's only a year and a half away from the next voting cycle, I'm just, I'm coming to a close here, but given what you've been dealt, I would expect that most of you do not want to run for another term. I don't envy any of you guys and I'm not blaming you guys. I'm praying for every single one of you, okay? It's not your fault, this is the equally hard, you've had two very, well, multiple bad options set before you. I want to be very, very clear, okay? But ask yourself this, what is going to be your legacy when you leave? You all will leave eventually, whether it's the next cycle or not. Will it be want to be quality and sound judgment, providing, you know, preserving the rights of all of our county's youth? Or will you trade one set of victims for the other? Will that be your legacy? Right now, you've been given a choice. Choose equality and pass this back to Richmond. If they want to make it a law and try to force it upon us, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but pass it back to them. You have a choice right now, okay? I know it's not easy, but will you choose to represent the safety of all or will you choose to jeopardize the safety for one for another? You can have a positive legacy on this issue. The people in this county are clear with what they want. I've heard tonight someone said this is probably the biggest group that's ever been in a school board meeting. I don't know if that's true or not, but this is good that we have this kind of dialogue and representation from our county. The people of this county that voted you in and that you represent and that you swore under the state constitution and took an oath to, let the consequences fall upon all of us. We'll deal with it if it comes to that as a county. Let us choose to continue to protect and give guidance regarding their rights to all of our children. We can provide guidance. They don't, they're not allowed to go up and cuss out a teacher, but that's their First Amendment right, okay? Do not leave a legacy of exchanging education for propaganda that prioritizes one group over another. Vote no to this policy and replace it with a policy that protects all of our youth. Thank you.
My name's Keith Good. I usually act in front of people as much, but I'm a Christian. Now, my main concern is against my, the safety of my children.
Amen.
And going against what God said, and God said, "So, God created man in his own image. In the image of God, created he him. Male and female, created he him." And that's the way I believe it and I believe that's the way that God intended it. God didn't intend boys to go in girls' bathrooms. God didn't intend for sexual predators to go in just as easy as they could, anywhere. I like thinking about what these things was entailed. And you think, anybody that is a pervert or a sexual predator or anything could walk right in and say, "Well, I'm a transgender, I'm going, I don't enter the girls' bathroom, going to rape, kill, and hurt and wound our children. I have children in grade school, I have children in high school, I have grandchildren that go to the gate city over here, and I'm very concerned about the safety of my children. And if so be it that the county decides that they are going to go with this, I will not be able to support you. I will not, I'll have to take my children out because it is not right." But I hope that you have in your heart enough common sense and enough compassion to know that what God created it, that's the way He created it. He said it three times there, "He created, He created, and He created male and female." And it ain't very hard to tell the difference between a male and a female if they just look down. And I'm just a regular old farm boy and I know a lot of things, but, and, but God showed me that it's easy to tell male from female. And I ain't going to say a whole lot more. And this critical race stuff, I hope that you reject that fully also because they, that is more race than, and it ain't getting rid of race, it's making more race. It's putting my children in a place where they feel like that they shouldn't even go, shouldn't even achieve to do anything. And so, I hope that also in that part that you cancel that as well. And if you all go against it, I guarantee you, you'll not get my votes. That's all I can say.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for your service to our county and what you do. And as we look around, I'm sure we realize we must live in the Bible, Bill. Anyway, thankful for that. I'm pastor of Trinity Bell Church, you're just west of town. A lifetime mem, uh, lived my lifetime in Scott County, educated here, my children as well. And I will be brief, just like to encourage each of you as you review the curriculum for all of our schools and what will be taught in our schools. I know God gives wisdom and for you to be able to find that in the curriculum today, and I've read some of those, it's just like the wolf in sheep's clothing to change the thinking of our children. First of all, it's not the state's responsibility to even educate our children, it's the parents. And that's why parents are here tonight and I myself as well. As David said in the Psalms, "We have a goodly heritage," and I believe that there's enough people in Scott County to be sure we keep it. And as we speak about the curriculum, we've come in today's time to that gray area. Seemingly, there's, there's no absolute, no absolute wrong or no absolute right trying to live in the gray area. And that cannot be. And when we leave right and wrong and, you know, leave those institutions that have been taught, the heritage of our country, even the display of our flag that it, that it would divide. I've served our country under those colors, my family has, many of you all have family here, and I honor that flag and I always will. And so, when we think about, yes, we are a nation under God, but as these have spoken already, the nation that forgets God shall be turned into hell. You know, so the righteousness exalteth the nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. The agenda that has been brought, being eased into the curriculum is sin. And I will close in my remarks today and again, thank all of you and I pray for you as others, I know we. And the real issue, as we can see today, there's lots of people here may not even go to church, but they know what right and wrong. They know what good and evil is and all of that. And I feel like that one statement that should be made is this for all of us. We really don't have a race problem in this country. We don't have a political problem in this country. Our sexual identity problem in this country, what America has today is a sin.
Amen.
Well, I want to start off and say I'm glad that, I'm thankful for the county I live in, thankful that, I mean, we've got a lot of liberties here and thankful I live in a county where we, I mean, a lot, a lot of places in this nation, just being conservative and being a Christian is looked down upon, but we don't live in a county like that. I want to thank God for that. I won't be before you for just a few minutes, everything that I was, probably had on my mind's done been said, but, you know, I'm a pharmacist by profession and every, every, every patient I know of that is transgender, they're also on an antipsychotic or something like that. And you can argue and say, "Well, that come after it because of, because of the treatment they get" or whatever. But the world, the world we live in, like somebody's already said, you can't, I mean, just because a person's disabled, we don't, we don't tear down the stairs and so nobody, so nobody else walks up the stairs, but, and we, we live, we live in a world where, where I know it's not their fault, it's, it's not somebody's fault for maybe some feelings they have. And like somebody already said, it's sin. It's the reason that everything like this comes upon us because there was, Adam and Eve fell, fell in the garden, sin, and death came upon all men. But the Bible said that, as somebody already said, that every, all the wicked shall be turned into hell in every nation that forgets God. And the Bible said, there's a generation that's right in their own eyes, but are not cleansed from their wickedness. And the Bible's also said in Proverbs two different times, two different chapters, that every man's what, every man, that the, that every man is right in his own eyes and there is a way that seemeth right unto a man, but the end thereof are the ways of death. And I was just going to read just a few verses of scripture and I'd like to have something be planned out and get into all the science of it, but enough of that's been said and I just want to give what God laid on my heart. And I will say this, if you look, sexual dimorphism is the difference between almost every animal on God's earth, the male and the female differ. You can tell, my young'un back there has two cats, I know which one's the bull, because he looks different, he's bigger. I mean, you, that's just the way it is. And if God made me with blue eyes, amen, well, I can go get some contacts and maybe have brown eyes or something, but there's nothing I can do to change my blue eyes. And if I'm born a man, ain't nothing I can do to be a dog. I can't do, there's nothing I can do, amen, to change. The Bible said, the ethiopian can't change his skin, the leopard can't change his thoughts. We've been, we've been dealt this, what God has given us. And the Bible, as already been quoted, the Bible said that God created them male and female in the beginning. Whether you're Christian or not, you can't, you can't deny that there's, it was, there's some things that used to be solid facts. Male and female, that's the gender, that's the sex, amen. And there's even, there's even things, me and the brother was talking on the way over here, there's a movement that says there's no absolutes. Two plus two ain't even four, I mean, it can be whatever you want it to be. But it's, but there's some things that are absolute, and God, God created this earth and one day God's going to judge this earth. But Romans one, God, you that's been in church, you, you've probably heard this and quoted and, and read, but Romans one, if this don't describe where we're, where we're at, I don't know what does. The Bible said in verse 19, "Because that which may be known of God is manifest in them, for God has showed it to them; for the invisible things of him from the creation of the world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even his eternal power and Godhead, so that they are without excuse." And this is where we stand right now, "Because that when they knew God, they glorified him not as God, neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations, and their foolish heart was darkened. Professing themselves to be wise, they became fools." That's where we're at. Amen. We think we've got so much wisdom and we can't even tell what, we don't even know that there's a difference between male and female now. And changed the glory of the uncorruptible God, we just did the pledge of allegiance and said, "One nation under God." The Bible said that there's, there's one God. All them false nations, they had false gods, but worth, amen, but there's one true and living God. And the Bible said, "It's a fearful thing to fall into the hands of the true and living God." And it said, "They glorified him not as God, neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations, and their foolish heart was darkened. Professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and changed the glory of the uncorruptible God into an image made like the corruptible man and the birds and four-footed beasts and creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lusts of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God to lie, and worshipped and served the creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever." Amen. And for this cause, God gave them up to vile affections; for even their women did change the natural use from that which is against nature." And I'm not, this ain't hate, I mean, I love everybody in here, but when, but, and God does too. God does too, just because a person's homosexual, I don't mean God don't love them, amen. But there's a, there's a lady sitting in here that goes to my church that came to, came to church one December, a lesbian, and God on the altar no longer is anymore. Amen. God loves everybody, amen. We ain't here because of hate, amen, but God loves everybody. But there's some truths in this Bible that we're all going to be judged by one day. And it says, "Likewise, the men leaving the natural use of the woman, burning their lusts one toward another. Men with men working that which is unseemly, receiving in themselves the recompense of their error which was met. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge..." Here's where we're at, you've got a decision right now. You can retain God in your knowledge, amen, and, and you can take a step, continue to follow the Bible and follow in truth, or we can reject truth. And if we do that, it says, "God gave them over to a reprobate mind, to do those things which are not convenient." Be filled with all and rights... Being filled with all in righteousness, fornication, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, murder, debate, deceit, malignity, whispers, backbiters, haters of God, despisful, proud, boasters, inventors of evil things, disobedient to parents, without understanding, covenant-breakers, without natural affection, implacable, unmerciful, who know in the judgment of God that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them." And I know this ain't got nothing to do with homosexuality or anything like that, and that's just in that, in that passage of scripture, but there's, there's some facts, some scientific facts, every, that, that can't be denied. There's male and there's female. And ain't, and if somebody, if I, if I want to, if I get in my mind, it's okay to commit murder, what's, I mean, where do you draw the line at? If I want to, if I want to kill Bill Houshright over here, and so I'm going to, amen, if I think it's okay in my mind, amen, who's to say I can't do it? Wait, are they going to pass, uh, pass laws that says that's okay? Well, you say, "Well, that's against the law." There was a time, this was against the law. There was a time that this was against the law. "Wiser man than ever lived," the Bible said in Solomon, and over to Ecclesiastes, chapter 12, the last chapter of that, or last verse of that chapter, and last, uh, chapter of that book he wrote. He said, "God shall bring every work into judgment, and every secret thing, whether it be good or bad." You know, that stands for me in judgment, you can vote for this, and amen, and, and go against, go against what the, obviously, the will of the people is, amen, it might not hurt you, but one day everybody in this, in this room is going to stand before God in judgment. I love you, and I, I thank you for the opportunity to stand. I'm hoping you make the right decision.
Thank you, board. You guys got a tough task ahead of you tonight, I guess, uh, making these decisions and stuff. I'd like to start out by saying thank you to each one of you, the job you do, representing the schools, the students, faculty and the staff. Y'all have a lot of decisions to make. Um, and I think everybody is aware of that. Um, but I'm here tonight, of course, to discuss the issue of the opposite sex, transgender restroom issues that's been brought forth. Um, I personally respect the rights of every, every single person. Everyone has a choice to live, uh, by the rights of being able to do, um, choose to live and, and they have their rights that they are, choose to live by. If the board tonight decides to approve or pass, um, how do you plan on monitoring, uh, to ensure the safety of these kids while they're in there? I'm, I'm just going to make a few points in question form, maybe give you something to think about, hopefully, over the, um, the course of the discussion of this. Um, how are you going to stop someone at a ballgame from entering the bathroom? All they have to do is say they identify as the opposite sex, the, the liability, who's willing to assume that role, that liability role. The cons outweigh the pros to this, ten of one. Individual locking the doors, you're saying, a pedophile will not stop, they can easily get into the bathroom stall locked or not. They will just wait outside the door until someone comes out. It's, uh, it's not that hard. Once they come out, they can take them one inside. It's not the same today as it was, was 15, 20 years ago. Respect was tall, fear of consequence, we don't have that today. Most schools in this county, they range from pre-K to sixth or seventh grade. How's a first grader going to feel walking into the restroom with a seventh grader or the opposite sex? They aren't going to feel comfortable, they're going to walk out, maybe without using the restroom. If it happens once, it's not a big deal, but if this continues to happen, these kids may even start to have health issues from holding them. Uh, that might be something we've been on a thought about. An example, if, you know, you might think about putting a teacher in these restrooms, but then you're putting a teacher in a vulnerable situation with a student of the opposite sex. There's a liability there. It is a responsibility of the parent to ensure the safety of their children. However, when a child is at a school location, it's personnel there, acting as loco parentis to ensure the safety of the child in the facility. Once again, uh, it all, liability goes back to schools when it's there. If you feel like you should pass something, I'm encouraging a gender neutral specifically for those transgender or kids that feel like they should, I, I can't describe how their kids feel, um, but at least have some type of neutral restroom for these individuals, and that's, that's what we should do, pass. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board at this time?
Come on up here, turn up here, turn up here, wave a little.
My name is Ronnie Dorfman. When I was in grade two, we had missionaries come on, talk, talk Bible to us. Well, they took God out of schools, wouldn't let them come anymore. You know what happened after they did that? You didn't hear of no school shootings or anything like that? Since, and who, and who was the daddy of that, taking God out of school, telling them to come back teach Bible lessons? You pledge allegiance to, to the flag and honor God, but you don't do it at school. That was where the Christian people messed up, it is, they should have stood up right then. But we did. But we're standing up now.
Amen.
And begging you to stop this.
That's right.
It's your choice. Just like you said, you will, you will stand accountable one of yourself. But just because some atheist or liberal says it's the right thing to do, you've got a conscience and the Lord's speaking to you, you make y'all mind that.
Amen. I don't have a Bible, I don't know scripture. What I do have is two little girls at home. That I just had to explain when I was telling to my wife what was going on at this meeting tonight. And my 10-year-old overheard me. Daddy, what is that? I just had to explain to my 10-year-old why a little boy could potentially be using the bathroom right beside her. At 10 years old? I don't shelter my kids. I like for them to experience life so that they can have a little bit of life experience when they get out of work. But at 10 years old, I had to explain this, going to be in the sixth grade? I'm not a Scott County resident. I have options of where I want to send my kids to school. My kids love this school that they go to. I should not have to be explaining to my 10-year-old and my six-year-old, nor anybody else in here, when they go to elementary school here in a few weeks, "Well, there might potentially be somebody in your bathroom that you don't want in there." Where's, where's the line at? I have a concealed carry permit, no, it's not here. But it is illegal for me to take it into a bank. I take it into the bank, and they say, "Well, that's illegal, you can't do that." Well, I feel like I can. We were just on vacation. Some of the stores, "Sir, do you care where I mask?" No, I don't care to, because I look at my kids, and they're wanting me, they're wanting to watch what I do. So I put the mask on, I didn't say, "No, ma'am, I, I feel like I've already got one on." Another question to you might be, where does it, where's the deciding factor? Do we show up at school one day? I think I feel like using the ladies' room today. And then tomorrow, now you know what, I'm going to go with the boys. Can they flip-flop? Is there something we can write down, say, "Well, he's got to go there, and she's got to go there"? Or can they just do whatever they want? I know a lot of people in here don't shop at Target for a particular reason. I still do, because my kids at 10 and six don't know the difference. I'm not going to tell them, "No, you can't go in there and buy that toy," because whatever rule they've come up with. When they adopted this in that particular store, my reasoning to this was, if I see a male follow my daughters and my wife into that bathroom, I, at that point, am going to identify as their mother, and I'm going in with them.
I'm Bill Perry, is my name.
I'm Chris, your name.
And, uh, my thought on all this is, is where is the end? If this gets approved, next thing you'll be, there won't be any walls between the bathroom, when they need to go, they just go. There'll be no ba, no walls between anybody. And that's my thought on it. It just, it's a never-ending problem. So, I mean, we need to do the right thing here. Because it's just something that's going to stop, that's going to continue, continue, and continue.
That's right.
So, I'll share this.
I'm Ed Stanley, I'm from Weston County, but I love this county. I spend more time fishing and hunting here than most y'all think. But this ain't going to stop here. You're allowed to do, it's just going to be stores, restaurants, it's going to keep on going. When are we going to draw the line? When is one of these going to show up at school and get the rape daughter going to turn on you? That's what's going to happen? Worry my words.
When, when I pulled in the parking lot, I, I come up and I, I pondered in my mind, do I bring this in, or do I not? But then my mind went back to, this is what this nation was founded upon. And I guarantee, everyone sitting in this board meeting, you know what this says. You know what it says, but the Lord reminded me to remind you, we're all going to stand before somebody bigger than Washington, bigger than Richmond, or whatever might come against you. We're going to stand before God one day, we're going to give an account for everything we do. I'm praying that you make the right decision. That's all I have.
I had no intention of speaking to you all tonight when I came. I came in supporting my pastor, because he was going to stand up for the way I believe. But while I was sitting back there, everybody's talking bathroom, 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 that's true, but you've got to look at these sports, they play ball, they go in the locker rooms, they take showers. I want to ask each and every one of you sitting up here, you've got a grandchild? Or children, I don't know. But do you want the opposite sex to be allowed to go in that locker room and take a shower beside of your child or grandchild?
I had no intention of talking, I gave my time to Jeff, but I'm a foster parent in Scott County. Some of these kids have already been sexually assaulted in their homes. You know, what would, what would it do to them to come in to a bathroom in school and have somebody else come in there on them? You know, I just, I think that ideal, I hope you all take that into consideration. I have a kid that has autism, that's five years old. I sure don't want him any more confused in this world than what is already confusing him. So I pray you all take that into consideration also. But it's about these kids and their safety.
Hello, y'all. So, I 100% agree with everybody's beliefs and everything. Here's my thing, this is coming from my child, 12-year-old girl. She don't want no boy in the bathroom with her. I've got nephews. If a girl thinks they're a boy and comes in the bathroom, they probably going to be treated like a boy. Take it how you want it. I mean, you didn't know what happens in the high school bathrooms when you're a kid? Boys are men, kids are men. But you got to think about that. You know, there's underlying issues with the whole transgender thing, but there has to be a line. And I'm asking from my child and from children, kids that I have, they don't want this. You know, you've got plenty of adults standing around, but this is kids of my life. They don't want this, I say that. Thank you all. Thank you for everybody. And I pray for you all.
My name is Guy Gilman. I've been in Scott County for 40-some years. My kids went to school in Scott County, and now I've got grandkids in school. I'm also a preacher of the gospel. And I know what the Bible says about male and female. I know that in the beginning God made man from a dusty earth, and He breathed in him a breath of life, and he became a living soul. Then God put Adam to sleep and took out a rib and made one. And I'm 69 years old, and all this time, I've never seen in the animal kingdom, I've never seen them change. It's always been male and female. And that's the way a holy God made. Now, I don't know nothing about this stuff that's going on here, but I know this, there's a God in heaven, and when we start going against the things that God's wrote down in His book, one day we're going to give it a count to a holy God. I don't care what color you are, I don't care where you're from, but there is a male and a female. And that's the way my God made. And I'm glad, thank God today, that He's got a son, and His son is named Jesus. He comes down, and He gives His life for the count, that anybody in this whole wide world could get saved by the good grace of God. And I'm glad that He made me a male. Amen. I'm sure your ladies glad He made you a male. And I don't have no, I don't have any trouble at all identifying that. Amen? Let me tell you something. You think about this, Bible says every knee is going to the bathroom. Every tongue is going to confess. We're going to give a count one day. And I sure want to be on God's side. Amen? When I get over there, and by the way, I'm going to be judged, too, we all are. But when I get over there, I want Him to say, "You stood up for what's right." I've never seen as many carers in all of my life in the day which we live. People scared to death to say anything, scared to death to stand up. Let me tell you something, He stood up for us. We ought to stand up for Him.
Hello, my name is Chris Lane. I'm a father of three children, two boys and a girl, and I love my children. I remember the day that I got saved, it was January 27th, 2013. And I remember whenever I get my first testimony, my first testimony was whenever I looked over at my children. And I said, "Lord," I said, "I want to do the best I can to train them up." Because that's what Solomon said, he said, "Train up a child in the way that he should go." Whenever he's old, he should not, he should not, he should not depart from him. And that's one thing that we have to do as every grown adult here, we need to structure our children in the basics of life. I mean, it does not take a genius today, and me and the brother was hopping, coming up the road. It's insanity that we're even having to meet with this today. It's insanity, it is. But I ask each and every single one of y'all the question today. I want you to take this home before, even after you vote on it. I want you to take this home and ponder on this whenever it's reported, and it probably will. Because children, their minds are not mature like yours and mine. My children, they can't decipher what cereal they want to eat. And we're asking them to decide what gender right or wrong. It's insanity. We have to take a stand for what's right. Ask yourself the question. I couldn't even imagine this, just standing there in the back. It haunts me to even think about this. My little girl, Avery Grace, she's seven years old. What do I do the day that she comes home and says, Daddy, I got molested at school? What do I do as a father? Ask you to ask yourself that same question. But it'll be, if you make this decision to support this, that might be something you're faced with. And it'll haunt you. I'm telling you, do the right thing for the citizens of this county that has voted you into this position. And do us a favor and stand with us on right and wrong. That's all that we do. This is the first board member I've ever come to in my life. It is, I'll be honest with you. But it's the most important. The Bible says do not remove the landmarks. This is a landmark, I'm begging. As a father, I love my children to death, I do. I ask you to stand against this. To stand on my side. Because it might haunt you the rest of your life. Whenever it's written up in the paper that some child has been molested. And know that you supported it. I ask you to stand against it today. I appreciate your time and I'll be grateful.
I had something written out, but I'm just going to keep mine short and sweet because I agree with everything. I'm an apostolic young woman, so I agree with everything biblically that they have said. But I've lived here in this county all my life. I actually teach at Gay City Christian School. And the Scott County school system is wonderful to us and our students. I don't have students in the public school system, but we do send students over to vocational. So it will directly affect them as well. Apart from the religious side, I'm asking you to vote in a way that it will not take my rights away, my children and my students' rights away. You know, I don't agree with the transgender lifestyle, but we are American citizens and if that's what they choose. But I'm asking you to not just go on what they want and infringe upon my rights and my freedoms. There can be other arrangements, maybe their own bathroom, whatever. Just don't infringe upon my rights to please the others.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I feel like I need to kind of add a few things. My pastor mentioned earlier that someone from his church was a lesbian for years and is not anymore. And that's me. Was a lesbian for almost 15 years. And I have kind of a different perspective, but I agree with everything that everyone has said here. But I don't think opening the bathrooms for free for all is going to help the transgender. Think about a little kindergarten kid. They're very impressionable. They see the teacher treating, it's a little boy, he sees the teacher treating the little girl better. He thinks. So maybe he thinks he should be a girl that day. So he's going to go to the girls' bathroom because teachers treating girls better. So then he starts acting that way every day because he's confused. Or we could cause more issues with these children by allowing them to go to whatever bathroom they want psychologically. And, you know, their school years are very important. It's when, you know, they develop in so many different ways. Things that happened to us as kids affected who we are as we grew up. And I just think we need to think about that as well.
I guess everybody knows me. I've been preaching about 35, 40 years in Scott County. Your career. I was wondering, who was the idea of this getting in the bathrooms and stuff like that? Youngness. Who come up with that idea? If they can't tell no difference between a man and a mom, they don't need on the board of supervision. They need to get somebody on the board that knows what they're doing. Plain and simple. A girl is a girl regardless. Don't matter if you can cover her up, paint her black, purple, pink, whatever, she's still a girl. Even big guitar out of a boy, he's still a boy. Ain't going to change him. That's just the way it is. If you can't tell no difference between a girl and a boy, you need to get off this job and get you nothing. Maybe the old folks on the other side.
Didn't come with any intention of saying anything, but I can't leave without saying something. I'm going to answer to God today as the rest of you do. And I'm about to say what I feel. You know, I was raised in school, down in Hiltons, started out Hiltons Elementary, ended up at Gay City High School, Little School. We got out of line, we got a pilot. How they taking the pilot out of school? Dr. B, you mentioned the word of God in school. They took the word of God out of school. They're taking out everything good out of our school system. And what are they replacing it with? I don't want nobody coming to the bathroom with my sons, and they got no business being in there. I don't want him going to the girls' bathroom. And if he went to the girls' bathroom, and somebody contacted me and told me he went to the girls' bathroom, you see a 15-year-old boy get very upset very quick. Because that would get pretty mad. And when that gets mad, he don't like it too well. And you know why that's the case? Because God set a standard. It's called the Word of God, the Holy Bible. Now, I don't know any people personally, I only know one of Bill Hosh's other person that I know personally on this board. He probably don't know me because he's seen about a million kids, so he'd see that. And I understand it's a tough situation that you're put in. And I respect your position, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. This is an extremely, extremely important decision. I think it's time the minority quit getting in the way every time they're quiet about something. Now, if this was something that made sense, it'd be okay. But this is one of the stupidest, most ridiculous things I've heard in my entire life. Not down here. And I'll tell you this. Even if the board votes against this thing, and there's just one of you that doesn't vote against it, you'll answer to God for that one. And that's a fact. No one but you, but you'll answer to God for that. I don't know how you do your vote. I've never been to a board meeting in my life. And I had no intention of saying anything tonight, but I had to say how I feel. This is too serious to just act like it's no big deal. And if we've got the answer, what are we going to do? It's the governor. I don't care if it's the President of the United States. That governor does not have the right to tell you what to do. If it goes against your constitutional rights, have some guts. Let's not have some backbone. A lot of things for people to say about this old boy, one thing they can't say is that I ain't got a backbone. Now, I'm not a mean person, get me wrong. But I'm going to stand on what I believe. And if somebody comes into my house tonight, or the mouse, they gonna love that. Because I'm going to come up to my feet quick, but they're going to have a little problem. I may get hurt, but somebody's going to get hurt. You don't want to break into your house, you're going to get in the face, ain't you? That's the same thing here. Your child goes in the bathroom, you can't be there to defend that child. Because they told you it's okay. Or some grown man come out when your little girl's in the bathroom. That's okay. What are you going to do about it? You're on the job working, she's getting molested. You find out about it later on. You guys are going to, and somebody said, you guys are going to live with your decision. And I respect that. I respect your position. I hate to have to sit through this mess that the governor keeps dwindling down to everybody else. And I'll go on record as saying this man is tired. Must God have made a place to say it. The days of having a backbone seem to have disappeared in this country. Doesn't matter what goes on, it's okay. Everything's okay. Everything looks safe. And especially what the Bible said. It's getting like Solomon and Gomorrah, that's what we're seeing. The Bible said we're more tolerable for Solomon and Gomorrah in that day than its generation. God help all those that stand against God's people. Stand against the Word of God. That word's alive, that's God's word. And I thank God that we're in the Bible now. You get outside of this area, some of these other places. You know, I'd say it's a real some of the stuff you see, some of these other countries. I've heard some stories. I wouldn't only go to these places because they don't want God there. And if you vote for this mess, you're saying I don't want God here in Scott County. You're saying I don't care what God has to say, I'd rather listen to what Governor Northam has to say. I'd throw Governor Northam myself through his face if he listened. But it's probably going to get through his security to get to him. But you better do the right thing. And I truly hope that you will. And like the rest of these folks, I'll be praying for you that you make the right decision. But to me, this is an absolute no brainer. I don't think it takes two cents worth of brains to know right from wrong in this situation. Please, don't make the wrong decision, go against God. And you may not believe in God, I don't know. If you don't, you're a fool. That comes from the Word of God as well. I hope you do, and I hope you make the right choice here. All these folks are here for a reason. They're concerned. I've been upset the whole time, just hearing what's going on. And I can't grasp the unrealness that we're in this situation in my lifetime. I never believed I'd see a time like this, but we're seeing it. Are we going to stand up, or are we going to cower down and say, well, ain't nothing I can do about it? I'm glad our forefathers didn't say that when they fought for freedom. Because if they had right now, we'd be under somebody else's control. I couldn't be standing here right now and tell you how I feel because they probably wouldn't let me speak out against the governor. I had to keep my mouth shut or go to jail. I thank God for a free country. Praise God. And if you want to keep it free, you've got to do what the Bible says. God let us be free because we stood behind the Bible. I ain't said those men were saved that founded our country, but they trusted in God and they prayed. How many times do you see Congress pray? Please do the right thing. Don't let just some godly mess come into Scott County. Don't give this beautiful county a black mark. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
As the mothers have said, I came with no intention to say anything. But I'm a parent of the graduate of Gay City High School. And I've worked in your school system for 11 years as a substitute teacher and in the cafeteria. I have a daughter that's in her second year of college. She's graduated from Gay City. But I want to share something that happened in her seventh grade year. She was walking down the hallway, and a girl walked past her with a case that had a rainbow sticker on it. And my daughter just said, oh, she must be gay. And she did not mean it in gay or lesbian. She meant gay happy. Gay City Middle School chose to reprimand my daughter, heterosexual Christian child that's been born and raised. They reprimanded her because she made that statement. That was hard to take as a mother. At that point in time, she was the one that got singled out. She was also pulled into the classroom by two teachers at Gay City Middle School and was told that she was wrong in believing the way she believed. They didn't have a right to tell that to her. If they believe that way, that's their business. I have dealt with a lot of small children because I mainly worked in the elementary school. When I chose to not continue working for the school system, I miss those kids. We have kids that need a friend. And tonight, we're all trying to be their friend. And as it's been said, it's for all. I don't agree with it. I don't agree with transgender. God made man and woman, yes. But all need to be protected, yes. But you don't need to take away what our heterosexual Christian, non-Christian children have by letting it be that a man or a woman, a boy or a girl can go in the bathroom with them. I don't think any of you would be comfortable with the opposite sex coming in the bathroom with you. You are opening a door that won't be able to be shut. My daughter never went and spent the night with anybody when she was growing up. Now, as a little one, she was confused. She didn't understand that. And I'd have to tell her, I don't know who they are. I don't know if I can trust them. I could never give it back to her if somebody took it from her. And you won't be able to either. Our kids need protection on both sides, I agree. But why are we taking away what our children have had just to satisfy this group over here? As it's been said, I pray for you too. And I know you're only doing what you're happy to do right now with this meeting. But I hope that you'll vote in support of not letting that happen. We don't need males and females mixing together. She actually had a statement made to her that if she walked in the bathroom and seen two girls together, walk back out. That's not what we should be telling our kids in school. Thank you.
I appreciate everybody coming. I know it's trying times, and I've been on board five and a half years. Last two, and heck, let me tell you. Going to COVID, going with this. But I appreciate y'all coming and speaking your mind. That's what we need. And if you don't care, we can talk in this meeting. We have to go back and talk about some deep things, so I've got to move on to the next agenda item, the superintendent board, I'm going to hand it over to John Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And board members, in your package, you'll see several things. But the first thing I'd like to bring to your attention and ask for approval, at our July meeting, we did not have a deputy clerk, Kim. So at this time, I'd like to recommend Kim Henderson serve as our deputy clerk to make the July 1st, we'll make this retroactive, July 1st, 2021, with your all's blessing.
Much for Ms. Gilmore, and second for Mr. Sally. All in favor? Opposed?
Congratulations, Ms. Henderson. Also in your package, you will see the changes that have been made to the instructional learning plan for this upcoming school year, which we will begin here in the next couple of weeks. But if you would take a few moments, look on the backside of the first page there. I want to read this to you. And again, this was updated the end of the month with announcements that were made in regards to the choice of the use of masks being that of a local decision. We know things are changing in terms of, I guess, the variant, things of that. But as of right now, I wanted to share this with you. Scott County Public Schools is planning to return to five days a week, full-day learning on Monday, August 16th. Since the beginning of this pandemic, our school division has been dedicated to providing safe and effective learning for our students. And we have a part to play in how we return strong and stay strong for the whole year. The most essential thing we can do is keep our schools a safe place to learn. Now, our COVID-19 Leadership Task Force continues to review daily updates provided by the Center for Disease Control, the Junior Department of Health, as well as American Academy of Pediatrics. We anticipate mitigations will change as we navigate the 2021, 22 school year. And the masking scenario we choose at the beginning of the school year could change numerous times throughout the year. But to ensure a safe start to the school year, layer prevention strategies will be in place on August 16th in all of our schools. And at that time, masks will be recommended, not required for everyone. And we ask for your support and understanding as we proceed through these times. Now, please keep in mind, this is a recommendation. We ask that the mask, while not required to be worn, it's still going to be the decision of the parents as they send their children to school, whether they want their child to wear a mask or not. But one requirement that we will have in terms of the use of masks will be that on school buses. That is not, that will not change. We will be required, our students using public transportation, will be required to wear masks. But once they arrive at school, if they choose to take it off, if parents bless them, they can. Or if they choose to wear one, they can do that as well. But that is something that's come down from the federal, under the federal guidelines with the transportation. That is not a change. It can't be changed at this time. That, that is not a change, or can't be changed at this time. Especially after our experiences last year, you know, this is subject to change, but this is why I like to begin the start of this school year. I would ask that you approve the amendments, changes made within this document as presented to you tonight.
I'll make the motion approved. A motion from me, a second from Mr. McConnell, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, uh, last year, uh, it worked out especially well with our food service program. Folks need to understand too, that what money is brought in to our cafeteria fund concerns phaser bills and pays the salaries of our cafeteria folks. We participated in a community eligibility program where every child, regardless of their socioeconomic background, received a free breakfast, free lunch, and after-school meal as well. And we will continue with that for this upcoming school year. So you will see in your package prices, and these will be adult breakfast and adult lunch prices for the 2021-22 school year. And I would ask your approval of these prices for adult breakfast and adult lunch only, unless there's any particular questions in regards to this.
A motion for Ms. Gillmorder, a second for Mr. Sally, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
And also on your back, on your desk, or excuse me, where you're sitting, you'll see a chart, I want to share that with you, the number of meals that were distributed to our students for the entire 2020-21 school year. And this includes a breakfast, lunch, and supper. We had, the school division distributed without cost, 745,739 meals to our students last year alone, which I'm very proud of. And we wanna see this kind of participation, the distribution of fun, of food to our students. Hopefully, that number will increase this year. I just wanted to share that with you. Another item, our cafeteria program does participate in the Southern Appalachian Mountain Food Buying Co-op, in which a number of school divisions participate in this program. And there's also school divisions across the state line that participate in this, but this allows prices to remain somewhat lower by participating in this cooperative. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to this, I ask your approval to what Scott County Public Schools to participate in the Southern Appalachian Mountain Food Buying Co-op for the 2021-22 school year.
I'll make that motion. Motion for Mr. Sally. A second. Mr. McConnell, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have is for informational purposes, at this time, Scott County Public Schools, uh, earlier this year was, was awarded $6,277,176.41. And this is through the American Rescue Plan Act, or otherwise known as SDR refunds. Now, like many of the grants, we have to make application for this, and so we have to show on an expenditure list of different things that we can apply this toward. Of course, now, keep in mind, there are stipulations to the use of this money, and it has to be related to that of COVID-19. But we can use these monies for additional personnel, technology support, maintenance upgrades, the purchase of school buses as may be, cleaning supplies, and a whole list of other items as well. I wanna keep, wanna remind everyone, this money is not used to supply local estate funds, and cannot be used in that form. But I wanted to share with you, not only requests by the department heads, but adjusted requests to total that amount. And this money has to be spent out come September 1st at this, at this time, 2024. And so, we do have to make application for this, and we have to spell out exactly what we wanna use it for. But I did want to share this with you, this is more for informational purposes at this time. Unless you have any particular questions in regards to this, I'd be glad to answer them. But again, this is informational purposes at this time. Do we have any questions? Here none, we'll move right on. The next item we have is the approval of the program financial report, June 2021, for the Head Start Program. Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to this? If not, I ask your approval of this financial report as presented.
Got a motion for Ms. Gillmorder. A second. A second for Mr. Sally, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item we have, and this is for informational purposes, the directors' report for July 2021 of the Head Start Program. And again, this is for informational purposes. Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to this document? Here none, we will move on. We have, you have in your package, the salary scales for school resource officers. In talking to sheriff Eads, I asked the question if in fact, they being an employee of the sheriff's office, if they in fact received an increase in their salary. The answer was no, because they are not identified as part of their comp board, you might understand. And this school year, all of our employees did in fact receive a 3% raise instead if they were eligible for that. And one group that was not factored was that of the school resource officer. And I ask you to consider to do the same for them. If they're eligible for a step increase, they get one, plus they'll have 3% factored into the salary scale. Keep in mind, school division fully funds salaries in fringes of five of our resource officers, and we also paid the local match of the five additional that were awarded to the grant. We did not get any outside help.
So our resource officers getting a raise, counting on comp, something like that.
The ones who fall under the comp board, as is made reference to by the sheriff's office, they in fact got a 5% from the state.
I'll make that motion. Got a motion from, Mr. House, right? And I've got a second from Mr. Hood, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all that I have for this time.
All right, my understanding, we need to go into closed meeting?
Yes, I move in to close meeting to discuss candidates for employment and the assignment and performance of Head Start personnel, teachers, teacher assistants, coaches, nurses, custodians, bus drivers, maintenance staff, cafeteria staff, as provided in Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia as amended. I also move in here in the closed meeting to consult with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation as provided in Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Code of Virginia as amended.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Voice on the floor.